Chair.
Okay, good morning, everybody. My name's Council Christine Banks and I'll be chairing this committee this morning. I have councillors Pauline Walton and councillors Malcolm Kelly, just us three make a decision. We've also got community services, our licencing officer and our legal representative. So here I've got Craig Carmichael, Carl Bruder and Stephen Hesketh. There's no other guests that are coming in, is that right? No, okay. So, over to you, Gary.
Thank you, Chair. This is the, this is the full hearing of the Licensing Subcommittee to hear the expedited review of the premises licence. Today is the first of the third twenty-one, and Gary Baskett from Liverpool City Council licensing. The purpose of this meeting is to determine an application for an expedited review of a premises licence from Merseyside Police. The premises, the Richmond Hotel, twenty-four Hatton Garden, Liverpool L three two A A. Premise licence holder is the Savvy Hotel Group and their duly authorised representative is here, Stephen Hesketh. Stephen's also the DPS. The group's solicitor is Carl Bruder, Carl's here today as well. The application was for the expedited review was received on the third of the second twenty-one and the interim steps hearing was heard on the fifth of the second twenty-one. Brief grounds for review concerned coronavirus incidents reported on the thirtieth of the first twenty-one and investigated on the first of the second twenty-one. That's the weekend of the thirtieth and the first of the second. The police believe this constitutes a serious crime disorder as such called an expedited review. The licence remains as it was at the interim hearing. Open eight till three for licensable activity, alcohol eight till two. Activities eight till two with twenty-four hour for bona fide guests. At the interim hearing, the decision was made to suspend licensable activity at the premises and that's what's happened. Just as a very brief background, alongside this review process, there's a coronavirus improvement notice issued by Anne-Marie from Liverpool City Council Licensing following communications and correspondence with Mr. Hesketh and Mr. Bruder. That notice was withdrawn on the fifth of the second twenty-one, but we'd agree that any improvements would wait pending this full hearing. An FPM was also issued on the weekend, that's been paid. We did receive a representation from the licensing authority responsible authority, Andrew Blackmore, and he's here today. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that, Gary. Right, first of all, we'll bring in Sergeant Carmichael, then I'll bring you in. Then there could be questions of the councillors and then I'll bring other people in after that. So it's over to you, Sergeant Carmichael.
Good morning, Chair. Can I just check, you can hear me? Okay, good morning, Chair, good morning, everyone else. This is a review that was brought against the Richmond Hotel following a recent interim steps hearing in accordance with section fifty-three A of the Licensing Act two thousand and three that took place on Friday the fifth of Feb two thousand and twenty-one. I'm here to represent the review on behalf of Merseyside Police. Firstly, I would like to clarify a couple of points that came with the last meeting. I was asked at the first hearing if we'd had evidence on this premises being used in this way previously. In April two thousand and twenty, the police did attend and deal with an issue at the premises, but this was in connection to the vulnerable homeless people who've been staying at the premises and another male who was trying to gain entry. For this matter, I don't think it's relevant to this review as it was not similar to the incident on the thirtieth. In relation to the month leading up to the reported incidents, Mr. Hesketh in the meantime, in the last couple of weeks, has shown me his electronic diary for the month of January and with the exception of the weekend in question, the amount of rooms booked was lower for the rest of the month. Due to this, I have no evidence that this has been an issue every weekend as it was suggested predominantly from the email received to the police on the first occasion. As a further point of clarification, although this premises was taken to summary review, I can confirm that this incident at the premises did not involve guns or knives. The two assaults on the police officers are still under investigation and due to this, I may not be able to respond to any queries that you have regarding this investigation. You have before you a bundle of documents that we have served and I will be referring to. The bundle contains the reasons that the hotels can open during tier three, apologies, tier four, statements from another police officers who attended on the night, including an overview statement from Sergeant Bond, who was a senior officer at scene, the police incident log and the Richmond Hotel's own disclaimer for people staying at the premises for essential reasons. And the police's records, as already stated, the licence holder is Savvy Hotel Groups Limited and the only director is Rebecca Hesketh. The DPS is Stephen Hesketh and he's done the day-to-day running of the premises since June two thousand and thirteen. The first Covid lockdown was on the twenty-third of March two thousand and twenty, now eleven months down the line and currently in our fair lockdown. Merseyside Police have used a fair but fair approach to policing the pandemic and they have been using what we call the four E's: engage, explain, encourage and enforce. In the early months, the first three E's were predominantly used with enforcement to be only used when required. Since September, the Police Licensing Department, along with the City Council, have been giving out one thousand pound fixed penalty notices or advice to licensed premises in breach of Covid regulations and this continues to be the case. We have shown a stepped approach to enforcement which has now led us to consideration of further action under the Licensing Act. The Health Protection Coronavirus Restrictions Tier Four legislation that Liverpool is currently in gives direction for on-licensed premises to close. Hotels are allowed to open with restrictions and Merseyside Police will state that these restrictions have been seriously breached. Page one and two of your bundle shows the reasons why hotels can open and guests are permitted to stay during tier four. You will see on page three of the bundle that the premises was aware of these government restrictions as they've asked customers to complete the form. There does not appear to be any follow-up or checks done or due diligence after the completion of the form. The receptionist informed Sergeant Bond that it was not his responsibility to ensure that people adhered to the rules and that as far as he was concerned, if people completed the booking form, he had no responsibility to make any further checks. The circumstances I will now go through will outline how the premises is seriously undermining the objectives of crime disorder, public safety and public nuisance. The serious crime that has been in this application refers to in relation to the premises continuing to open in a way that allows persons to attend private hotel rooms and consume alcohol on the premises. This facilitates gatherings of people not from the same household in one place, which is putting the public at risk of contracting the virus and subsequently passing it on to others. Investigation since the interim hearing has found that a minimum of three rooms were used for such parties. The first room number I don't have, but the following two were two three three and three seven three. On the evening of the thirtieth of January two thousand and twenty-one, Merseyside Police received an email that premises is hiring out rooms to youngsters and they are having parties all weekend long. At approximately three o'clock in the morning on Sunday the thirty-first, two officers from Merseyside Police attended at the Richmond Hotel. The log came in at twenty past eight, but they were unable to attend earlier due to other preventative work being done in relation to Covid and its enforcement. Upon arrival, they could hear loud music coming from one of the floors and they asked for other patrols to make. Police Sergeant Bond has then attended with other officers and his statement is on pages ten to thirteen of the bundle. Upon entry, he has noticed one member of security and the receptionist. His attention has been diverted to approximately ten young adult males coming down the stairs. These males were spoken to, along with being stop searched, and one of the males was in possession of a music playing system. Sergeant Bond has then gone upstairs to investigate further and at this point, he has seen four males in the corridor heading towards the end of the corridor. Sergeant Bond followed these males, who then began to run and tried to close the door behind them in an effort to stop the police. The door did not lock and the males were seen to enter the first hotel room. He could hear music and people coming from that room. Upon entering the room, the officers found a large party inside. There was music played with disco lights flashing. Sergeant Bond was able to get this switched off and the main room lights were switched on. There was excess of thirty young adults partying in this room. There were five police officers in total inside the room and hence were heavily outnumbered. He made the decision to request all people inside the room to leave and to leave the hotel as they were in breach of Covid regulations. Unfortunately, his body worn video was not on at the time. Sergeant Bond has asked for further resources stating it is unmanageable as there are thirty plus people in the first room and numerous rooms were being used in this way. In total, Chair, I'm aware that twelve police officers attended the hotel to deal with this incident. They have required more officers to deal with all the people present. Some of the officers were at scene for approximately ninety minutes. This is a high cost to police resources and prevents other incidents being serviced at the same time. These officers were having to put themselves and their family and the general public at risk of Covid infection in order to execute these duties, unable to keep the two metre guidance distances due to searching. Sergeant Bond has gone on to speak to the receptionist. He was found to be under the influence of at least drink, for which he did not deny, and stated that it was his last night in this job. A snap bag and the remnants of white powder were also found near there, but no further action was taken. He was asked about the parties and the people contained within the hotel. He stated that it was not his responsibility to ensure that people adhered to the rules and that as far as he was concerned, if people completed the booking form, he has no responsibility to make any further checks. It was confirmed at the interim hearing that there was no managerial staff on duty and at this time fifteen rooms had been booked that evening after nineteen hundred hours. So the suggestion is these rooms were booked up very quickly on the evening in question. Police continued to walk around the hotel looking for other parties. Sergeant Bond saw numerous people walking around and on sighting the police, they would run along corridors or down staircases to prevent being detained. It was noted that many of the females at the party were dressed up as if going on a night out. He also noted numerous discarded nitrous oxide canisters on the floor, empty snap bags often used for drugs and paper cups laying around. Sergeant Bond was then alerted to a fairer party where ten to twelve people inside. Inside this room were bags of cannabis along with bottles of alcohol and spirits. He stated the atmosphere within the room was confrontational. Within this room, one adult male was arrested for no bail warrants and an adult female arrested for assault on two police officers in the execution of their duty. Whilst this female continued screaming and shouting abuse, under influence of drink, she threw a headbutt at the officer and other officers were assaulted to the chest. Fortunately, the injuries appear minor, pain and tenderness which will go away without further medical treatment. A third room containing ten to twelve people were found in a similar situation with clear evidence of drugs use and hostility towards police officers in attendance. During this incident, thirteen Covid fines were issued along with eleven documented warnings and three community resolutions for drug possession. I have a list of thirty people dealt with by the police on the night. They've all given addresses in the Liverpool postcode and they're all aged between seventeen and thirty years. To clarify from the first hearing, it was only one person who was under the age of eighteen. From body worn camera and police officers' accounts, nothing that I have examined or people challenged were able to give a plausible reason for being in the hotel. It is also clear from CCTV that very few, if any, persons in the building were wearing any PPE, including face masks, which is a requirement when in indoor public area. In relation to the people receiving the fines, at least three of them have already received Covid fines previously. Some have received advice in the past in the way of the three E's. The police state it was not possible or practicable to issue Covid fines to everyone in attendance due to the sheer number. From these three rooms alone, there's approximately fifty people reaching Covid regulations. The actual number of people in total around the hotel is unknown. I believe that we all accept that there was fifty people involved at a minimum and to give any higher number would be speculative and not particularly relevant to the outcome of this hearing. Further white powder, believed to be controlled drug, was seized along with approximately three hundred nitrous oxide canisters that could not be attributed to any one person. The CCTV from the hotel, their own system, has been examined and this has complemented the police officers' statements, also showing people leaving and attending the hotel unchallenged, no face masks being worn and no social distancing, door staff and receptionists holding the front door open for people to enter, the reception and security not controlling who attends the premises and not being checked in, people bringing in alcohol with no attempt to hide it, a male walking around with a speaker system, security staff directing groups to hotel rooms, people in particular females dressed up for a night out and finally, police in attendance, the security directing people away from the police where the police were. Merseyside Police and the Liverpool City Council Licensing Department have had a virtual meeting with Mr. Hesketh and his solicitor, Mr. Bruder. During this meeting, they offered no excuses and they accepted the failings at the Richmond Hotel from that night. A list of the revised conditions have been agreed in principle between the police, council and the licensing holder, which is on bundle pages twenty-one to twenty-two. This covers a Covid reference document, staff training into the book and updated CCTV conditions. Mr. Bruder and Mr. Hesketh are aware that although agreed in principle, the final decision will be down to the Licensing Subcommittee on the day and the all powers of the Licensing Authority on the determination of a review are available to them. In conclusion, Chair, there are a number of sections of the statutory guidance that ask yourself and the committee to take into account, namely sections two point one, two point one six, eleven point two, eleven point one six, eleven point one nine and eleven point two three, along with the council's own statements and licensing policy. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you for that, Sergeant Carmichael. I've only got two questions. In one of the reports, it said there was a smell of cannabis, am I right?
Which report was that, Chair?
Some of the police officers' reports.
Right, yes.
Yeah. So if people are smoking cannabis and smoke rises, was there no fire detection of this? So fire alarms didn't go off, did they, or?
I'm not sure.
Smoking out the windows or?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any alarms going off.
Right, okay.
Letting you with cannabis, if people have been smoking it, it does stay in the air and stay on your clothing for a long time after.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, you're right. So you indicated here that you've sat down and you've come and agreed conditions, am I right?
Yes, Chair.
Okay, that's all I'm gonna ask for the moment. I want to bring in your two councillors, see if they've got any questions. Councillor Walton, have you got any questions?
At the moment, thank you, Chair.
Councillor Kelly?
No, I'm okay, thank you.
That's the best. Right, I'm gonna bring in Mr. Bruder next. Mr. Bruder, over to you. Oh, hang on a minute. Robyn, have you got any questions?
Um, right, probably perhaps it might be Mr. Bruder can address. It's just that some of the conditions that they suggested, if the committee reminded to make, they may take some time to put in place, I'm not quite sure. So just in terms of what decision the committee may make at the end of the day, we'll need some kind of timescale in order to work out how to achieve the implementation of the conditions, but perhaps we can address that in due course.
Thank you, Mr. Bruder.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Obviously, Stephen will listen in because I'll ask him shortly to possibly elaborate on the aspect of, for example, conditions. So we're almost walking through the site to explain how in practical terms they are proposed and how they will be enacted and how they'll improve hopefully the issues which led sadly to this. Thank you for Sergeant Carmichael for going through his statements and I think he was very candid confirming that this was just the weekend concern because at the expedited review, there was concern raised by the councillors concerning had this been a situation that there isn't in previous weekends. And clearly, they've done the background importantly, this was a one-off event and that's been clarified. And again, for emphasis here, on expedited reviews, certainly journalists ran a bit right with this and headlines, guns, knives and so on. That isn't the case and wasn't the case. And again, thank you for clarifying that, Sergeant Carmichael. So effectively, as well as that, the premises are open for accommodation only, there's no supply of alcohol, any issues that were brought in whilst, you know, the stops are doing to dilute the issues. There was no supply of alcohol, so the restaurant was closed. So effectively, that isn't an issue either. I think there are numbers of persons, again, I think the journalists are a bit right with this and it's circa two hundred and that caused issues for the premises commercially. Effectively, it's circa fifty and again, one is too many, but it's certainly nowhere near two hundred. But at least we've got more of a factual reflection on the concerns as they were as opposed to misinformation. There's no doubt, and I think it's correct, Sergeant Carmichael referred to comments made by myself and Stephen at previous teams' meetings we've had, that due diligence was lax, no doubt, in terms of Covid nineteen regulations. And I think on a wider issue, what's happened generally then, just for the benefit of the Subcommittee, I've had conversations with Gary Baskett, Anne-Marie and Craig, effectively did, but particularly the council enforcement side of things. They've gone and shall we say, approached hotels generally in the locality following this. So there's been a benefit in a way to ask those sites to review their own due diligence so to ensure this doesn't happen or couldn't happen there. So there has been sort of a knock on effect and then coming back to the subject premises. Then there's referred to the coronavirus improvement notice, the CIN, has reached a point where the council are satisfied subject to any comments the committee have here. I've got Anne-Marie's email to me twenty-third of February confirming, I'll just read it. Stephen and Carl, fairness to the meeting yesterday, to discuss the opening of your booking system to include those customers who fall into the qualifying groups under the current Covid regulations, the council, the city council guests and so on. I'm satisfied that the management procedures you have supplied to us cover the screening of those customers. And then she goes on fairly to say, I cannot stress enough that those management procedures are only as good as the staff who are managing them. I would urge you to tighten that within the organisation, which is a correct comment. And Stephen, no doubt surely will just confirm generally within the subject premises themselves how the staffing apply the conditions because conditions can be agreed, of course, in all formats. But it's important the committee are, accept that the staff are aware of that and implement those concerns. And again, within the bundle you've seen, pages twenty-one to twenty-nine inclusive, up to page twenty is the police evidence and then from twenty-one onwards, it offers the conditions which are proposed. Again, rightly said, they are for proposal, it's for the committee to ratify these. I'll just go through very, very briefly. The first, and this is a comment made, I think by Paul Maryman rightly, just to ensure this is implemented. There is a document in there, which is a next. And I put in as part of the proposed conditions, a cover word because the document is obviously due diligence, it's seven pages long. I thought it would be wise perhaps to incorporate that. Almost as a parachute condition during Covid regulations, it may not apply outside should we ever return to normality. But the cover would be the attached seven-page document, just to generalize this, called the Richmond Updates on Licensing Improvement, shall be added as a condition to emphasise, blah, blah, blah. For such period as government Covid nineteen regulations are imposed, all pages of the before said document shall be physically displayed at the subject premises along with the summary part of the licence. So of course, regulatory issues require, as you were, the summary part to be displayed if you walk in any subject premises. So the requirement here would be to have this physically right next to that. So when a council officer or authority member walked in, they could see A, the summary part, so who's the licence holder? Who's the DPS? And B, at a quick glance, they can see the seven-page documents required to be therefore displayed next to that. And then underneath that, there's a reference on page twenty-one to add the following conditions. And the first one was in terms of training, without going through the whole wording, it was all staff to be fully trained to perform their role and that would then encompass this document. Go A through the licence per se anyway, the original conditions and B, to emphasize today's issues, to go through that document i- in fine detail and then to make it have an incident book and so on and so forth. And then as a tidy of exercise, the old licence which you've got here has reams of pages on the old style CCTV conditions that applied and internally with many applications done recently, the police might be like to tidy that up to a more concise, modern CCTV condition which has been agreed. So that's covered on page twenty-one and page twenty-two. And without going into detail right now, we've got pages twenty-four, twenty-five to the end. They are the seven pages of the Richmond document, which is effectively the pragmatic condition that we're looking to. We're inviting the committee to impose here. What I'd like to do at this stage, if I may, is invite Stephen to go through that document because this is on the coalface, because you as a committee have got, okay, document is fine, but how is it practically that you go through as a customer, for example, walking in? So if I may suggest to any questions, councillor, you've got for me now. I could mute myself and then invite Stephen to come in at this point.
No, I've got no questions at this moment. Has any of the other councillors got questions at this moment? Thank you, Chair.
No, I'm okay, thanks.
Okay, for the moment.
Thank you, Chair. So I'll mute myself and Stephen, you can kindly pop in at this stage, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, it's fair to say on the evening, we have been severely let down by our team and our third-party security company, all of whom have been removed from the premises. Without doubt, as a management company, we of course have to learn lessons and trust me, we severely have. We have instantly, from the beginning, so to speak, or after the weekend in place, immediately made changes to the property and instantly closed one of the two entrances into the main building. Thus, making actual, for a better sign in, much tighter control. People actually couldn't pass the desk, for a better word, without clearly engaging with our team, et cetera. And of an evening, our security guard actually now sits at that entrance continually through the night from seven PM till seven AM and screens every single person that walks through the door, which historically was also in place. However, on the night in question, our security team didn't precede that and definitely let the team down. And I could sit here and say they were friends of those that were here and whatnot and I think the police reports even refer to that, et cetera. So, you know, just, you know, lessons learned is that we are a good operator. We strongly believe in others' operators. It's just very circumstantial that on this particular night, our team have gone lacksy daisy and we've been caught very short. Further advice, and actually I have, in my capacity of Vice Chair of Liverpool Hospitality, I've now shared this document with the wide hotel establishments across the city of which have resorted in numerous questions coming back to me about actually, A, how good they are, but B, also that, oh gosh, actually the due diligence was more than what we had anticipated. It's great to actually see a document that's actually giving us some clear advice and guidelines because none of that was prevalent from government. So the pre-screening of all guests that will now book moving forward, coming in, will be fully screened, they will be telephoned in advance and where not possible, they still will not be allowed to check in without going through the process and that process also asks they still will not be allowed to check in without going through the process. And that process also asks for further uh due diligence or documentation to prove that they are here for work, that they are attending a a sporting event or whatever the the valid reason. And if that's as simple as, you know, that the boilers broke or or flooded or whatever, that that is again still further backed up with either photographic evidence or insurance documentation, et cetera. So that is all uh now in play and our our team have been trained up on that, et cetera. But it's the best due de- due diligence we can put in place by A, covering the reasons for travel and B, most importantly and most impactually, the the um door access, which was definitely the the key problem of the evening, in my opinion. I don't know whether uh the board wants me to actually talk through it word by word, but it is basically a a questionnaire that we will go through with the with the potential client of all the bookers, sorry, to actually determine their reason for travel. Um and what documentation we would require to confirm that they are suitable to do so.
Okay, so what we're saying here is we're going to have a receptionist on, is that okay? And when there's a booker made, you've got to have ID from the person who booked that room. And ID from the people who are staying with that in that room with those people, am I right?
Correct.
Because if I go on holiday and we booked a room, we have to have the ID number with me and my husband's. You have to show our passports, that kind of ID. And then you you're saying you've got to have back-up papers if it's the move you're coming into the city for business or in case something that has happened at home, that they need to leave the home to actually stay in a room for a couple of nights. So that's all in place?
Correct.
Okay. So you said you've been moved to CIA Company, right? So I did inform the police and the licensing authority of the new company that uses Toc on board.
Uh I I don't know whether I've advised them of the uh full details of the of the new company name, et cetera, and whether or not we had to. But I certainly made Sergeant Carmichael aware that the the um uh companies have been changed.
Okay. Okay, Council Walton, have you got any questions?
Yeah, I took one each time. Um you know, you you're saying your your new system of booking is people phone up and you do the normal check. Does that prohibit people walking in from the street to book a room?
It it doesn't prohibit it, but basically what we're saying, again, because of the third-party channels like booking dot com, et cetera, there can be occasion where we don't actually have a contact number for them until they arrive. So if, for whatever reason, the the due diligence process hasn't happened prior to arrival, of which we would have that signed document by the member of staff that's talked through and the backup correspondence to say why they're here, because ideally it would be emailed in advance, that we won't uncheck in, if that process hasn't been followed, it will be done at check-in. And again, the guest won't be allowed to stay without being able to prove it. And that may involve the guest having to wait until they can get a boss or a company to forward documentation or or whatever that that may be. So they will will not be checked into the premises until that process is is undertaken.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Also, Kelly?
Yeah, could you tell us um what steps, if any, are going to be put in place to ensure that somebody, such as a manager or a supervisor is actively in charge and available and what the process may be um for a receptionist to um be able to contact them just to either take some advice or alert them to any issues going on, because what seems to have happened here is that the um receptionists, whether, you know, it's a deliberate act or or not, um has been left to their own devices. Um certainly for them to say, well, all of that I do is book um customers in, and I'm not here to check the validity of um the the those bookings. The there didn't seem to be any supervision or management just to even pass through to see what was going on um in the hotel. And if there had have been um supervision there or management there, um then they would have certainly seen and heard some of this stuff that the police witnessed and could have done something to prevent it um from going any further.
Yes, uh uh I can appreciate that. There is always a duty manager uh in the building at all times. Um you know, again, sadly, I can't turn back the clock, but on the night in question, that duty manager was ill and didn't come to shift, et cetera. And yes, we took the um the chance, I suppose, for a better word, that that the team would be okay, because historically, certainly during this COVID period, it has been a quiet operation, you know, it hasn't it hasn't been busy. So rightly or wrongly so, at that time, we took the decision that they they would be okay on that evening. However, that member of staff also is fully aware of all the contact details of uh the management team, including myself, my general manager, the reception manager um and any other manager for that matter, they have access to all those calls. The training of the team has all been re uh readdressed, for a better word, our existing uh team, our our already duty manager that is usually there, et cetera, are all very aware of how to raise uh any concerns or support. And uh after the occasion, uh which even is is noted in 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 the police report, we operate the building uh directly opposite. Um and they could have called for cover there beforehand. So it, you know, I probably, like the rest of you, sit here totally frustrated that actually that those members of the team on the night, in theory, didn't do anything. Uh and 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 um that's that's been our downfall without shadow of doubt.
So can I just ask, and I'm obviously curious on that point. So if a duty manager had not been ill on this particular night and had been in work, the the this potentially would would not have occurred, because you your duty manager would have been able to step in and 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 deal with it pretty quickly. I- is that what you're suggesting?
Uh in essence, yes. There's there's the circumstance on the night was that member of 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 staff. Um and again, there's no point talking about their history of of them working with us as such, but was lax on the night. And the security guard company, which again have operated with us for the last ten, eleven months and have done a tremendous job historically, particularly dealing with the homeless that we that we have been dealing with, et cetera. Again, on the night, had a member of staff that had been um with the company three or four weeks had done maybe two of those weeks with us. Um and as I said, on on reflection, we believe that both parties, both the receptionists and the security guard, knew a number of of the late bookers that that attended uh the the Richmond on that evening. So uh you know, it's it's very easy for me to say it's all been circumstantial, but I generally feel I run a very good operation, have been in the city twelve years, I've got an unblemished licensing record. Um I'm active in the in in the in the tourism and and, you know, feel very hard done by in relation to the whole incident. And total frustration with myself that on that night, we didn't, you know, because again, in the past, if if an incident like that has happened, I would have slept in, my manager would have slept in. So whilst we might not have worked the night, we would have slept in the building to be the backup on a on a generally busy night, et cetera. And I think circumstantial of COVID being quieter, et cetera, et cetera. We we've we've dropped the ball, so to speak.
So would a duty manager actually be within this, at the hotel, physically at the hotel i- i- if he hadn't have been ill? Or would it, i- i- is he or she only a point of contact?
No, no, they would they would work the shift as such. In in the unlikely event that sickness happens and there's only a receptionist on, uh then a, for a better word, daytime duty manager would often be asked to sleep in the building. It happens few and far between, but
You you know, obviously for absolute clarity, because I think uh last time we met, I was possibly mistakenly under the um impression that that the normal process is for there to be a receptionist and um security at the premises of an evening, and that was it. Um and 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 certainly with what we're hearing from the police is that the recep- when they were asked about the people who were staying in the hotel, the receptionist indicated to the police that he was um only responsible for booking them in, and he didn't think he had any sort of responsibility um to to check those bookings afterwards or deal with any of the the issues that were going on. Um and that was it. I haven't heard from the police unless Sergeant Carmichael um is able to tell me anything different. Where the receptionist has turned around to them and said, well, I only booked them in. We normally have a manager here who checks what's going on. It's out of my hands, the manager's not here tonight. And and none of that, I've not heard any of that explanation um from the police and certainly the impression I was under from last time we met was that the only people who are in that building and i- i- if you like, in charge of that building is a receptionist and the security. Um uh this is really the first time I'm hearing that um there is a manager, a duty manager, and it just so happens that they were not there on that night owing to ill health.
There there is always a duty manager in our building. That has always been the case. That's that's never different. On a Friday and Saturday night, uh that is where we increase the numbers uh of our our co- of our cover as such, and that's where there's an extra receptionist, night porter, whatever you want to sort of call them as such, on duty, et cetera. Uh but the night team as such are generally always supervisors in our building. So if you have come in since, as as the guys have, as the guys have managed for the last eight years, we have always had a manager on duty in our in our premises, et cetera. So yes, during COVID, we have had, I mean, we we say the word receptionist, we have a member of staff on and a security guard is what, but they have been our duty manager as such and trained to that capability. The individual on question on that night was not a manager and has not been trained to that 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 suitability. The fact that he was supposedly drunk on the evening, I I can't comment for what he's actually said on the on on the night. Clearly, he's 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 let me down in 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 many aspects. Um for for what it's worth, it's very frustrating that uh because he denied to me that 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 he was drunk in the investigations we had we we had with him as such. So he's he's blatantly lying to either I, the party, whether it be myself or the police, et cetera. Um it, yeah, I there's not a lot more I can say about the individual, unfortunately.
Okay, that's all. Well, thanks, Chair.
Okay, thank you. That's just one more question from me. Does the hotel have a drugs policy where if your rooms are used inappropriately, uh you address it with the person who's booked the room? Whether it be they're still on the premises or, say, I booked a room for for two nights and then staff find a drug use maybe the next day. What's your policy on that? Do you have a policy where, you know, you address it on the at the time with the person who's booked the room?
So in in respects to any uh uh like smoking cannabis or there's a smoking rule in relation to anyone caught smoking, which obviously causes further damage to our property from smells, et cetera. They are charged an additional cleaning fee uh and asked to leave the premises uh with immediate effect.
That'd be with the the silver blooming things or the fine powder stuff or anything else. So you do have a drugs policy?
We have a a a policy that that evicts any any members, any public, sorry, that that are staying in our building that are on, you know, taking drugs in any way, shape or form. Sadly, again, most of this sort of stuff, sorry.
After using your rooms inappropriately just for drug use, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah. Correct, we do. I mean, dare I say, in in a city centre hotel, you know, drug use the next morning when people check out. Um I wouldn't say it's a daily factor, but it's something that that isn't uncommon to see.
So if I used your rooms and I'd left the hotel, do you get in touch and say we will not not take the bookings from you because of the health and area we found in the room, stuff like that?
Uh no, we probably have, I wouldn't say we go to that extent.
Just ask them. Okay, eh, Robin, have you got any questions?
Uh yeah, thanks, Chair. Just I noticed one of the conditions that's proposed relates to CCTV. Um it's a changed condition. Can I just check, is that uh would that require any physical change to the CCTV system that's currently in place? Or is it already compliant with that condition?
Uh the CCTV is compliant this coming Thursday, and again, Mister Sergeant Carmichael, sorry, will be welcome to come down from Friday onwards. We'll see in a a new camera being installed literally above the reception area and the uh further camera outside, because it was outside that that uh we struggled for no physical uh visual on the on the evening in question. Uh that that camera has been repaired already as such, so we can see that, et cetera. But also on the Thursday, it is being moved onto the main um CCTV setup, because it was it was an older camera set up on a on a on a different system as such.
Okay, and the other proposed conditions, is the premise is already compliant. So in terms of the training condition, um I are the staff all now trained in accordance with that condition, or is further training needed to comply with that condition that was imposed?
I I would say eighty percent of the training is complete and only due to COVID and members of staff not actually, you know, sadly, this incident has caused us the the hotel major significant hardship. And we've had to lay off more members of staff onto furlough and and cut back im- immensely. So actually um my time and the general manager's time is is very much, we're we're pretty much there all the time between the two of us. So there's still a a one or two members of staff to be completed, um but we are certainly in the right direction. And that's trained on the CCTV camera system, which is probably the hardest bit of it, as well as the licensing um uh rules and regulations.
Okay. And the the seven-page Richmond Hotel document, which in details all the changes to the booking system and the website and everything. Is that actually currently in place now, or does that's part of it still need to be put in place?
No, that that's in place now.
That's in place now. Okay. Right. Yeah, but the reason I'm I'm asking is because um obviously the committee will need to make a decision uh as to how it decides to deal with this full review um decision. Uh but um whatever that decision is um today, the interim steps will remain in place for twenty one days uh until the appeal period is passed. So the interim steps at the moment, Chair, are that the licence is suspended. Um so the committee does have power to change those interim steps. Um that's obviously, it will depend on what representations both parties want to make about that. Uh whether they're happy for their premises licence to remain suspended pending the twenty one day period, or whether they're asking uh for the interim steps to be changed, to reflect these new conditions um that are now being proposed. So perhaps before the end of the hearing, if these parties could just confirm what they would be asking the committee to do if the committee is minded um to to make the conditions uh that are now being proposed. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you for that, Robin. Um Mister Blue, do you need to come back in?
Uh i- 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 is this information effectively uh
No, maybe you've got a lot else to add, that's fine. I just wanna ask, does Mister Blackmore, eh, do you have anything to add to today's hearing?
Uh nothing further to what Sergeant Carmichael said, Chair, that obviously the licensing authority support the application that Merseyside police submitted. But for 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 members, just for members' knowledge, our enforcement officers have been out to the Richmond um since the incident, doing inspections. We've met with Mister Hesford, but we're also out actively looking at all the hotels throughout the city to make sure that that everybody is adhering um to 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 the guidance as 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 they should be in relation to who they take bookings from. But this will continue um over over the coming months, and we will be back to the Richmond to check any conditions you've put in place today. Um are 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 all in place. I'm not fair to the chair.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anybody else have anything to ask before I go into summations and bring Sergeant Carmichael Michael in first? Nobody got much to say? Wonderful.
The only comment, yeah, the only comment I won't mute it, is a comment by by Robin concerning the interim steps and to valid points. Clearly what the operators after, if uh if you as a committee are are minded to 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 impose the conditions that we hope you do, and I'll prefer to do so in more detail and summary, is to 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 effectively to to enable the the sanctions that currently exist per the expedited hearing to be lifted. Obviously, commercially, um they are they are keen to to get back on board. And it's not, it's not it's effectively whilst they are limited in the business they can can have at the moment. Uh clearly, even those limited steps are are causing them uh commercial difficulties in what is clearly a trying time for them and others uh. in what is clearly a trying time for them and others at present. But clearly, it's a matter for you to accept the conditions or not, and I'll go into those in, 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 in summary. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, Sergeant Carmichael, if you want to come back on, I think that's just been discussed. If not, I'll go through a summary.
No, happy to go to summary, Chair.
Over to you then, Sergeant Carmichael.
Thank you, Chair. The incident on the night for the 30th of Jan was sufficient as a standalone incident for the police to bring the premises to review. In excess of 50 people attending, total disrespect to the coronavirus legislation, with no social distancing, no masks, no staying at home. No management team on duty, leaving a receptionist who does not believe it is his job to prevent these offences, and door staff who acted like a meet and greet. Drug-related offences and police officers putting themselves and the wider population at risk to deal with these incidents, two of the officers being assaulted. However, since this time, as you've already heard on the last one and this meeting, the premises licence holder has fully worked with the police and the council since this time, after receiving a fine and COVID improvement notice. For this reason is why we've suggested conditions. And finally, Chair, in relation to the interim steps and the suspension, clearly if it is the decision of the committee to go with these conditions, I don't think we would have an issue that suspension being lifted. Realistically, the hotel business can't start till the 12th of May in proper anyway. I don't see it being any difference if the, if they're suspended or not for the next 21 days. Thank you, Chair.
So Sergeant Carmichael, you can, you're quite happy with the conditions that you've come to with the premises that you've put together, so you're quite happy with those conditions and satisfied with those conditions, am I right?
Yes, Chair, I'm satisfied with the conditions and satisfied that I'm sure Mr. Hesketh will not let this happen again.
Yeah, because there will be ongoing police entering, visiting the building, not every week, but you will keep up a, a relationship with the premises, am I right?
Yes.
Thank you for that, thank you for that. Mr. Blue, over to you.
Thank you, Chair, keeping the summary nice and breathing. In, in essence, on the guidelines, the various sections and Sergeant Carmichael at the start referred to the various paragraphs, essentially it's what's proportionate here, as, as you as a committee fully were. Historically, this has been a well-known site and hopes to continue, and, and, and has a lesson been taught here, and yes, it has, on a wider scope, yes, it certainly has. And for example, Stephen, I, I, I've known him for circa 10 years in business, he's very hands-on and he's a, he's the DPS, in many cases you have a DPS, you, oh, let's change the DPS, that's not even being suggested by any authority here, because I think it's taken, he, he sort of will absorb the issues and implement the improvements to do, which is what the committee certainly wants here. The, the, what's been proposed as conditions clearly has been, it's been proposed in tandem with the authorities, particularly of course enforcement at, at the council and Merseyside Police Licensing, who have in fact equally been, Craig's been out to the site himself and, and, and seeing what practically or how they work. And, and, and Stephen Hesketh himself is, is certain that the improvements will be conducted properly. All the improvements have been implemented already or by the latest Thursday. In terms of staffing, you, for understudy reasons, have yet to be trained. I, I, I think Stephen could sort of nod in the corner there, I'm coming, they, they would not be allowed to actually work at the premises until they can tick a box saying, sorry, you've, you've implemented those. So I don't think that would be a problem either, just to say as a PS, any staff not yet trained, but however, however many of, of those are left. So effectively, I, I, I think hats off to Stephen, my submission for taking it on the chin, it's, it's a lesson to be learned and, and the conditions hopefully are ones which will improve the venue per se anyway, and they are my submission, Chair, thank you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Blue. Mr. Hesketh, have you got anything to add?
Um, no, other, other than exactly what Carl said, you know, lessons have been learnt. This has been, and I, I don't like to go on, but it is factual to say, has been detrimental to the hotel financially in, in every sense of the word. And the press and the way the story's been, been taken has been deeply impactful physically, and I can put this into the millions due to the fact we're trying to sell the property and a sale has fell through because of the, the misrepresentation of, of how it's been portrayed in the media. It's been exceptionally stressful and, and, yeah, I think that's all I can say really. It's, it's, I just, I feel the, the lessons learnt are by far, will be taken exceptionally seriously, you have my word on that. And I feel that actually it's probably helped other operators in the city due to the fact that I, that I do share and talk to many of them, etcetera. So I, I apologize to the police for, for their time wasted, etcetera, and, and, yeah, I don't like that.
Mr. Hesketh, I can assure you I don't buy the local newspaper, not since it moved out of Liverpool. I'm very, very, really angry about that. So I don't, I don't go to the press or listen to the press or whatever they say, those are liars anyway. Oops, I'm not listening to this, I've added them, I've already said it now, I've added. Okay, everybody, thank you for that. What will happen now is we'll make a decision today. That decision will be forwarded on to you, I think it will be forwarded by email, Mr. Hesketh, will that be? Because the written one takes a lot longer than five days at this moment because of COVID to get out, am I right?
Yes, that will go straight through. And to back up which, what Craig and Carla said, the lines of communication have been excellent, so that will go out as soon as I get it.
Okay, thank you for that. If for any reason you don't like the decision we've made, you have 21 days to appeal our decision through, if that be the case, through the magistrate's cause, if that be the case, I do suggest you seek legal advice, but I do thank you for your.